Clearly saw the potential benefits of taking over these tools that so many governments around the world had wanted to buy.
But how did they get around the blacklist?
They had to try to convince the government to take them off the blacklist. So another Freedom of Information Act request we put in was to the Commerce Department. And what we found in those documents was that L three Harris pretty aggressively lobbied the Commerce Department and in meetings and emails, they had a pretty big Washington law firm advance their cause with the clear aim of basically putting this in stark terms. This is an American national security issue. So they went pretty hard at trying to, it seems from the documents, get NSO off the blacklist because that would have seemed to have been a prerequisite before they bought it. And so these talks go ahead until they leak out in the middle of last year. There are some reports that L three is in talks to purchase NSO and pretty much immediately the White House puts its foot down and say, no defense firm should think that just by purchasing a blacklisted company, that we don't worry about those tools anymore or that the company gets off the blacklist. So in other words, hey, L three Harris, don't think that you can pull a fast one here. We are on to you and we're not going to let this happen.
The White House steps in, says, stop your lobbying. We don't want to have this. This is not going to happen.
Right. And that effectively killed the deal.
Okay. So now NSO was trying to revive itself. Again, it fails. So what's the third thing you found?
The third thing we found kind of takes us right up to the present day. We kept learning of other parts of the U.S. government that had some interest in, you know, these kinds of tools. And we came across a contract that interestingly was signed just days after the Biden administration put NSO on a blacklist.
So wait, even after the government swore off working with NSO, it had signed a deal with the company?
Well, yes. So the contract is between NSO and this American firm that the FBI had used a couple of years ago to purchase Pegasus. And in the contract, it says quite explicitly that the U.S. government is the end user of this product. And what the product is, is it's another NSO tool to help track people around the world. It's called Landmark. And from our reporting, we found out that this contract was still active and it had been used to target phone numbers in Mexico. And when we went to the White House, they said it was news to them that they didn't know about this active contract with NSO. So it became this big mystery.
Okay. So maybe one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing, but it also could be a case of, you know, the technology is just so good, like we can't resist it. We're addicted to it. Like we can't resist letting bad guys use it when we have the chance to get in there and use it as well.
I think if you look at these tools, kind of like weapons as we have, you know, history has shown that powerful weapons are coveted by powerful governments around the world and governments that have them don't want to give them up and those that don't have them want to get them. And so I think this is just another example of that phenomenon, that these tools which give governments an enormous amount of power to spy on people around the world, they're not only coveted, but they're not going away. Already we've reported that there's another Israeli company, one called Paragon, that the U.S. is using. It's very similar to NSO. It doesn't have the reputational baggage, but when we went to the White House and said, okay, do you have a problem with this company? They said, well, no, there's no history of its tools being abused. So for now, we're okay with it.
So kind of like nuclear weapons, right? Like on some level, we all think to ourselves, this is a very bad idea. I mean, it can only lead to bad outcomes, but somebody creates it and there's a lot of public hand wringing, but then everybody wants it. And the next thing we know, we're in an arms race.
We're in an arms race. And, and the interesting thing is like unlike nuclear weapons, which were so powerful that eventually sort of a whole group of rules developed about when you might use them. In this case, these are sort of so easy to deploy and you can do it without sort of having any fingerprints of you deploying them. So it's sort of lowered the bar even more for governments to want to use them. In other words, there really aren't any repercussions for governments to use these weapons.
Despite the damage that they do.
Right.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Mizetti is a Washington correspondent for the New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Progressive. Progressive Commercial Auto Insurance protects the cars, trucks and vans that work to keep small businesses moving forward, including protection while running errands and other tasks. More at progressivecommercial.com. And by Bitwarden, currently in use by tens of thousands of IT professionals around the world. Bitwarden.
The May fifteenth evening session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order and I will call on our cleric, Ms. Suzie McCord to please call the roll.
All right. Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call Ms. President. This evening, I'm going to call on our council member Stephanie Moon Reynolds to do our invocation and following that I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you. Please take whatever position or whatever posture is appropriate for you as we go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, we come on one accord spirit, praying you will make your presence known in this meeting, praying you will give us knowledge and wisdom to do those things that are pleasing in your sight and in the best interest of the community. Praying we might have the courage to change our minds if, if so needed and be respectful of others' views, for we never know in what voice you will speak. And finally, Lord God, let us never forget that without thee we can do nothing, but in thee all things are possible. This is my invocation and may all God's people say amen. And amen. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our second session of today. Well, there are some seat space out here, but welcome everybody and hope you're, hope you're comfortable. It's good to see you. At this time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Sanchez Jones to bring us out of closed session. Read the certification.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Two, only such public business matters are as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard. These costs are considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call Ms. President. This evening, I'm going to call on our council member Stephanie Moon Reynolds to do our invocation and following that I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you. Please take whatever position or whatever posture is appropriate for you as we go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, we come on one accord spirit, praying you will make your presence known in this meeting, praying you will give us knowledge and wisdom to do those things that are pleasing in your sight and in the best interest of the community. Praying we might have the courage to change our minds if, if so needed and be respectful of others' views, for we never know in what voice you will speak. And finally, Lord God, let us never forget that without thee we can do nothing, but in thee all things are possible. This is my invocation and may all God's people say amen. And amen. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our second session of today. Well, there are some seat space out here, but welcome everybody and hope you're, hope you're comfortable. It's good to see you. At this time, I'm going to call on Councilmember Sanchez Jones to bring us out of closed session. Read the certification.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Two, only such public business matters are as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard. These costs are considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And we come out of closed session. Thank you. All right, we're now down to item of presentations and acknowledgements. And we have a proclamation declaring Friday, June 2nd, 2023 as Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I'm going to call on Councilmember White Boyd and the members of the Fed Up group to join us at the podium. Hey, you guys. You got it, okay.
Yeah. Yes, I have. I'll let you do your little spiel.
Well, it's a fine group up here. Thank you all for coming out tonight and being a part of this. And now I'm going to ask Councilmember White Boyd to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is certainly my pleasure to read this proclamation for Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas gun violence touches every segment of our society and impacts people of all ages, it increases the probability of death and incidence of domestic violence, raises the likelihood of fatality by those who intend to injure others and are amongst those who attempt suicide. It places children and young people at risk of physical harm and injury at disproportionately affects communities of color. Whereas we honor the many lives that have been cut short by gun violence in our country and city and the city of Roanoke and the countless survivors whose lives have been forever altered by gun violence. Whereas it is important to recognize community organizations such as families expecting deliverance using prayer, we call Fed Up, which assist families who have been directly impacted by gun violence and provide a continuum of care to grieving parents, spouses and other family members who must continue to provide for surviving family members. Whereas we encourage citizens to join this campaign by wearing orange the first Friday in June to help raise gun violence awareness and to honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership for the safety of ourselves and others. Excuse me. Now, therefore, I, Trish White Boyd, on behalf of our mayor, Sherman P. Lee, Sr. of the city of Roanoke, Virginia, encourage all citizens to support the local community efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor human life and do hereby declare the first Friday in June throughout this seven-time All-America City as Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you. Yes, you're going to be saying something and remind everybody about the wear orange on the schools and everybody's doing it.
On behalf of Fed Up, I want to thank all the city council, especially Trish White Boyd, for all she's done to make this proclamation possible. This is a very, very moving day for us. We worked so hard to try to bring awareness to this city and we're just thankful that now we can bring some awareness to it. And we just don't take this lightly. We want that first Friday of every year for gun violence. We want the schools, your employers, the government, we want everybody to wear orange. I think when we make a, bring awareness to this, hopefully we can make a change in this city and in this country about what gun violence does to us. Fed Up, we are Fed Up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. And I want to ask any of the councilmen, if they have something to say, please share it with the group. Anybody? Vice Mayor Cobb.
We love Fed Up. And you all have been out this a long time. And I just want to thank you for finding a way deep down in your soul to take the, the trauma and the ache of loss and transforming it into something that brings hope and encouragement and healing. And I know that this is just one piece of it, but the support group that you have is, is transforming lives. And I want to thank Trish and the mayor for working with you to help make this possible. Thank you all.
We are having a prayer breakfast on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 to 12:30. We are limited with registration, but if you want to go, we'll share the link where you can go and register. Just see me or reach out to Trish and we'll make sure you get the link. I think we already sent it to most of the city council and city manager, but if anyone else you know want to attend, please let us know. We really, really, truly love your support and want to continue to keep your support. Thank you.
And I'll just add one other thing, Rita. Rita and the rest of Fed Up reached out to Dr. White and she has agreed to make sure that all of the Roanoke City Public Schools get the announcement and encouraged all of them to wear orange that day. So we're really thankful for Dr. White because it means a lot for, for our students all over the city to be wearing orange that day as well.
That's great.
And Mr. Mayor, may I, I just have a comment and it's mainly for Rita. I just wanted to commend Rita on this effort. She's been on this battlefield for a long time and now that I think she's starting to see the fruits of her labor as she's now a nonprofit. And I just, I just cannot begin to imagine what that feels like to lose a loved one to gun violence. I have a, a family member who was affected by gun violence, but fortunately in the blessing of God, he did not pass away. So I have to say during that, there's a void in, in your heart that I know will never go away. And I've got, my husband has a cousin whose grandson was affected by gun violence and I don't know if, to this day, I don't think they have found the, the, I guess, the perpetrator behind that. And it's just, my heart aches for you. And I know you all are out on that field for those parents each and every day. When there is gun violence in the community, someone is being affected by it.
Yes, that is so true, Stephanie. And a lot of the members up here have lost someone to gun violence.
Yes.
That just represents just a portion of who's been impacted by it.
Yes. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm collecting babies and.
All right, let's give them a hand. I'm going to call at this time Wayne Lefrich, who is the Assistant to the City Manager and Neighborhood, Neighborhood Services Coordinator to assist with presentation to the graduates of our Leadership College graduation. Let me just read a little something about it. I already ran. And I want to welcome everybody and welcome all of you all who attended. We're going to bring you up in a minute, but welcome to the 25th Leadership College Graduation, which we've been having since the spring of 2003. The Leadership College is an annual nine-week community leadership program that runs concurrently from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on each Thursday evening and is free of charge. Roanoke Leadership College has been designed to engage citizens in a series of interactive and engaging discussions and activities, which enables participants to enhance their knowledge of the city and how the city operates. Participants explore issues that impact their quality of life as well as that of each and every residence of the city. Their interactive programs assist participants in collaborating with neighborhood organizations, community and business leaders, city officials and staff to improve the quality of life in their neighborhoods and promote a stronger sense of belonging and community. Building upon their knowledge, skills and commitment, participants of the Leadership College will begin to transform their neighborhood and ultimately our city. These graduates took the time out of their busy days to learn about their government, to become resources of information to their neighbors and hopefully to become more involved in the city in which they live. They heard from city council about the vision and future of our city. They personally met the directors and managers of each city department, learning about the services they provide and how to access those services. They also had an opportunity to interact with neighbors from across our city who otherwise they might not have had the opportunity to do so. I can thank each of you, I can't thank each of you enough for that dedication. Now each graduate will come up to receive their certificates when their name is called. And I'll turn that over to Wayne.
You're going to hand out the certificates?
Yeah, I can do that.
I'll read them out in that order.
Okay.
Well, first, let me just say I was very honored to be able to facilitate this group this year. They're a very inquisitive, very informed group and they were very excited about the information they heard from all the directors. They were excited to hear about all the different facets of the city that we participate in, all the different things we get involved in. And so very excited that they stuck with it those whole nine weeks and we have 16 people that we're going to call out and congratulate here today. And we'll start with Angelica Wagner. And Loretta Wright. She could not be here this evening. She actually texted me a little while ago, was unable to come. I should say Mia.
That's it? That's all?
Off the job again.
Mayor, while, while Trish is, while Trish is taking the picture.
Mayor, I can't see you now.
is recognizing citizens who are doing thing, and they can, doing things in the community. Uh, that's, uh, we're very proud of that. All right. Our next item, Madam Clerk from Aquila, our next item is public hearing.
That's correct.
All right. A request of Carrie and Justin Van Blakem to rezone an approximate 1.1 acre portion of property located at 24, 24 Bramleton Avenue Southwest from ROS, which is Recreation and Open Space District, to MXPUD, which is Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District. Subject to the development plan, the proposed use is an eating establishment. Carrie and Justin Van Blakem are the applicants. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Then, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We need a second somewhere. Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
All right. An ordinance to rezone a portion of the property located at 2424 Bramleton Avenue Southwest, bearing official tax map number 1470301, from ROS Recreation and Open Space District to MXPUD Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District, subject to development plan, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Uh, it must be noted that the Planning Commission recommends approval on a six oh vote. And I'm going to recognize the Van Blakems, if they're here. Uh, you all can come up and... And you can answer any questions, or if you want to make a comment, uh, you can do so.
Okay. Thanks for having us again. Thank you, council members, Mayor Lee. I'm Carrie. Justin, Van Blakem. Um, I think you know most of the details. If you've had this package and application before you, and we appreciate all the time, the effort, the energy, um, the discussion over our application and our desires to purchase the Caretaker's Cabin and the 1.1 acre on that front hillside with it, and convert it into a coffee shop. Um, and that does require a good bit of work moving forward. This is just the beginning. Um, and based on many conversations that we've had, um, from moving back, as we're from Roanoke, and we've moved back a couple of years ago, with the neighbors, with contractors, with architects, a lot of folks with expertise in the coffee business, we would love to be a part of restoring this cabin. We do know the Blackwells personally, and so, so thankful to have their blessing on seeing more life kind of grow and come from this coffee shop. And, um, we want to do our due diligence and continue to, um, keep it a park, open space land, even though we would own it. So the idea is that the green space that around, that's around the cabinet itself remain open, both to our patrons and to the public, to use it and frequent the coffee shop upon your approval. So our hope is that our kids' dreams and their friends and things of that nature get to, to have an amenity as an addition to the park, and not to detract from that space in any way, shape, or form. Any other comments or questions?
If you'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. You all stand by, or you can sit nearby for any questions that may come. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, how many citizens have signed up to speak on this item?
Um, we have 17 at this point.
17 people?
Yeah.
All right. I want the citizens to be heard, um, as special as that, to hear the citizens that signed up to speak up on this item.
Yes, we can hear the citizens, and let's, uh, City Manager and staff like have a quick presentation.
Jillian's going to run through a quick presentation. I'm not sure everyone's familiar, but we'll just make sure.
All right, we've got a presentation from the Planning Department.
I was hoping you were going to call an Officer Sahi instead. Jillian Papa-More, um, with the city's Planning, Building, and Development Department, just to make a brief, um, just a brief, uh, overview of, of both Planning Commission and staff's recommendation on these items tonight. So just to recap what the matter before council tonight is, it's, uh, a rezoning from ROS, uh, for a portion of property located at 2424 Bramleton Avenue Southwest. It is the former Caretaker's Cottage, um, owned by the city of Roanoke since 1925, and has since been vacant for many years. The applicant has a contract with the city to purchase approximately 1.1 acres, um, a portion of the property, and to renovate the historic building for use as a coffee shop. Um, but that particular use is, is not possible with the current zoning. Um, again, the request is to rezone, um, from residential, or I'm sorry, Recreation Open Space, uh, to MXPUD, the Mixed Use Plan Unit Development District. Our city's Planning Commission voted six to zero, um, recommending approval and endorsing the application, and finding that it was consistent with both City Plan 2040 as well as the, um, neighborhood plan for Grandin Court. Um, in, in association with those findings that are rooted in policy, um, here are the key takeaways. Um, one, the proposal includes an adaptive reuse of an otherwise vacant deteriorating historic building, um, one which has significant, tremendous, uh, importance and significance to, um, the community. Um, secondly, the commercial use is, is supported, um, actually supports the adjacent park and is compatible with both residential and commercial zoning. Um, third, the proposal includes a transfer of a relatively small portion of park property. It's 1.1 acres relative to a larger tract of 47 acres of, of park property. Um, finally, the commercial use creates a vibrant space for gathering that enhances a sense of community and social interaction. This use is symbiotic to a public park. Um, that concludes staff's, um, and the city Planning Commission's findings. There are slides available for discussion, and we are available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Now we'll hear from the citizens that signed up to speak on this item. Madam Clerk, you can call them in your order of their signing up.
Our first speaker is Clinton Stone King, followed by Shirley Himmel.
Hello. My name is, uh, Clinton Stone King. I've lived one house away from Fishburne Park for 36 years. I'm a homeowner. The house in Fishburne Park has always been a residence. It was, there was somebody living there when we moved in, and I don't know how many years after that. It's in a residential part of the neighborhood. The commercial part of Grandin Court neighborhood is at least a half a mile away. The commercial district of shops and restaurants transitions to offices and a church, and the rest of the neighborhood is residential, except for the Carillion Office Building that is surrounded by woods and lots of green open space. People need to trust when they buy a home in a residential part of a neighborhood, that it isn't near any commercial enterprises, and they won't suddenly have a business with food trucks and lots of retail activity near them. Approving this application would create an unsettling precedence. The National Parks and Recreation Magazine published an article, "How Much Impact Do Parks Have on Property Values," in April of 2020. They found that the majority of homes adjacent or near to passive parks had a 10 to 20% higher home values. The article also stated, however, in some cases, homes adjacent to a park did not show the highest premium because the value of locating next to it was outweighed by negative factors, such as congestion, street parking, litter, vandalism, noise, and intrusive ballfield lights. These are legitimate concerns about losing the buffer of open space in Fishburne Park that protects our neighborhood from the activities in the park. The buffer protects home values and peace in the neighborhood. Another attraction in Fishburne Park means more parking, more public safety issues. And since the new disc golf course and playground have been installed, the parking lot has been full almost every day. A lot of times early in the morning when I'm getting ready to start work. Our neighborhood is already concerned about parking and public safety issues as the weather warms up. The application states the proposed coffee shop will bring a new amenity to the park and expand the activities available to park and greenway users. Their goal will create more potential to adversely affect nearby home property values. The applicant claims that that part of the park is rarely used. The people use that part of the park many times a day. They use it so much that the public has created a path across the park where their dogs can walk and avoid the thorny husks from the chestnut trees that grow nearby. If you've never felt those, you don't want to walk on them. They hurt. Families play football in this part of the park. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Everyone has three minutes, three minutes. Thank you, Sheriff. The next speaker?
Yes, Shelley Himmel.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Shelley Himmel. I'm a longtime resident of Roanoke City. This is, it has been said at several hearings related to this matter that, uh, this would create a precedent for the city to sell out our parks when they become inconvenient. It's certainly not the first time that this has happened, but it is, in my knowledge, the most flagrant. Uh, this is not a historic building. It's just an old building. And the fact is, the city, which has had exclusive control of it for the last 40 years since the occupant moved out, is the entity that has let it fall into desolitude and neglect. Uh, I'm not sure that it's particularly fair to require the residents of Roanoke to bootstrap the city in its effort to deal with this problem that it's never dealt with before. But, in any case, it's been said that this is a sale of the land. It isn't. It is a gift from the city to the applicants. It is, the sale is taking place for $10, and there's no other consideration that is listed in the contract, which I've examined at some length, and have 25 years of experience analyzing. Uh, so, it's a gift of our property so that the Van Blakems, who are, I'm sure, nice people, can have their dream. But, at first, they get it free, and then they get to make a tidy profit when they sell it, as sell it they will. Every taxpayer in the city is being forced to subsidize a business, one that in this economic climate has a high risk of failure. The Van Blakems get their golden ticket. What about the rest of us? We lose parkland, and we get a commercial enterprise that we don't really want. I don't doubt that the Blakems have a strong emotional attachment to this project and this property. If someone was proposing to make a $300,000 gift to me, I'd be attached to that myself. Thank you.
The next two speakers, Owen McGuire and Dalton Burgess.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm Owen McGuire, current president, Grandin Court Neighborhood Association. By the Van Blakems' own proposal to the Planning Commission, they only need one-third of an acre for their project. You can see that on the diagram over here. Even after the Parks and Recreation Board recommended they reduce that to .6 acres, uh, which was twice the amount of land they need, they said no. They needed the full 1.1 acres. The Van Blakems, they want to be, said they want to be transparent, yet they have told the public nothing about their financing arrangements for this project. Has documentation from a bank or lending institution stating why 1.1 acres of land is required as collateral for a loan being provided to you all? The last meeting we had with the Van Blakems, I had an opportunity to ask them one question. I asked them what the difference in financing for their project would be if they reduced it down to .6 acres from the 1.1. They said nothing, got up, and walked out of the meeting. There's been comparisons made with the project to the Green Goat and to Sweet Donkey. The Green Goat was a, uh, train station. Next, it was a museum. Uh, it's a public museum, commercial, uh, residential district, and there's two other restaurants close by. The Sweet Donkey was a private property across the street from many commercial properties, and ate them an acre, and did not require a large land grant from the city. If this proposal goes through, rezoning, council's got to know then that an acre, that this acre of land will eventually be developed. The land will never again be parks and rec, privately held, and, uh, will be available for commercial development, and the city will serve notice on the rest of the citizens that our parkland is open for development. Come make us an offer. Sadly, this proposal has divided and scarred our neighborhood. Time will only tell if these wounds will ever heal. I think you know in your hearts what the right thing to do is. Say no to this excessive land grant. The developers can still have their coffee shop, and the citizens can retain their beautiful piece of land. Whatever you decide, whether you preserve the land or deliver a remarkable land grant, I hope you drive by the property next day or so, and look at the piece of land and trees, and understand why 85 acres ago, our city forefathers bought this land from another developer to help create what we know is today as Fishburne Park. Thank you. We've had a petition, uh, signed by a thousand people here, asking the land not to be sold. Thank you.
Dalton Bogus?
Hello, my name is Dalton Bogus. I'd like to thank the mayor, vice mayor, council members. I live in Grandin Court, have been there twenty-two years. Of those twenty-two years, I've noticed the house, the caretaker's cottage at Fishburne. It's one of the oldest structures in Roanoke. According to the media, it's one of three oldest structures. City's not maintained it. It's fallen in on itself. The trees on the property are dying. Today, I noticed there's two dead trees and multiple trees with dead growth in it. Carrie and Justin lived in Grandin Court. They played in Fishburne Park. They're wanting to bring something back to the community, back to the neighborhood, where everyone I have spoke with wants this project to go through. Imagine taking your children there, walking from your home to the park, stopping to get a cup of coffee, going to the trails, going to play on the playground. In the wintertime, that's where everybody goes sleigh riding. Taking your kids sleigh riding, come back up the hill, hopefully they'll have a fire outside and you can have a cup of hot chocolate with your family. This is an excellent opportunity for the city to save a structure, bring a new resource to our neighborhood. Yes, we're losing a little bit of green space, but what you're getting is a structure restored, a new business. They're going to pay taxes. No one's brought that up. It's going to be a tax revenue, property tax, mill's tax. It's going to save a structure, and I cannot see where this is going to bring down property values. Right now, it's bringing down property values because it's a vacant property. We're lucky, no one has moved into it. We're lucky it hadn't been destroyed by fire. Here's an excellent opportunity for the city to relinquish the ownership to Carrie and Justin, to restore the property and make it better for our neighborhood. I support this, and a lot of my neighbors support this. They're a good Christian family, and this would be a great asset for our community. Even neighbors have timed themselves, walking to the park to see how long it would take them to get there, and one lady said twelve minutes. The planning commission was unanimous vote on this, so please take that in consideration. And I think this would be a wonderful asset to our neighborhood and the city.
The next speaker is Chris Kraft, followed by Allison Blanton.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the city council. I won't take long. I have no problem with a coffee shop. My neighbors in the Wildwood neighborhood have a problem with the location. God gave us the beautiful parks, the trees. We don't need to destroy the parks. You take the EJ, um, Eastgate Park. Bob Hubert, Herbert was the city manager. He promised Wildwood Civic League that they would be redoing Eastgate Park. New basketball courts, softball fields, toys, everything. You know what's up there now? A paved driveway, a half a basketball court, no softball field, and nothing else for the kids. This city, not this present council, but this city is destroying our parks. We need our parks. It's the only thing left that we can enjoy. I don't get much chance to go to a park, but over the years, I've seen the parks falling to disrepair. Washington Park, I think it was Mr. Washington's House or something? You might know Stefan, either one down near Orange Avenue. That's falling apart because it's been eaten up by termites and stuff. The city does not take care of what it has. We need to keep the greenlands. If they want to build the coffee shop, fine, but we don't need to give them the land that's around it. They can do it with a smaller park. Our city needs to keep the parks we got and take care and maintain them.
Hi, thank you. My name's Allison Blanton, and I'm here on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation as the chair of our advocacy committee tonight. And I want to say that the primary concern of the Preservation Foundation is really the long-term stewardship of this historically significant property, regardless of the ownership, but probably most importantly, if it is going to be sold from our transition from public to private ownership, that stewardship and making sure there are mechanisms in place to, to really preserve it and guarantee that protect, long-term protection are extremely important. As you all know, this circa eighteen-thirty house they're building is one of the few remaining, I mean, less than a handful in our city that we still have, that date back to that period of our development. And it has invaluable lessons, both in, in its architecture, as well as its history, the stories of the people and the activities that they undertook, that lived there and occupied it over the years, tell us a lot about our past, and they're extremely important for us to protect. So, most important is that the building is used. The antithesis to preservation is vacancy. And so, we support this building being reused, and we think that some of the proposed uses and allowed uses are probably, have great potential to be compatible with historic character of this building. That being said, again, I think some of the proposals for today are fine and good, but nobody has really addressed what's going to happen in twenty, fifty, seventy years from now, when this is out of the hands of the public ownership. There's no way to oversee that. I point out to, we were on record with the sale of Unavista and wanted a preservation easement placed on that. There were some, some requirements in the deed of sale for that building, but I'll tell you that the Preservation Foundation listed that building on our endangered sites list last year because it has not been maintained and is continuing to deteriorate, even though the inside of it, I think, has been upgraded. Outside, if you've been out there, the ceiling of the portico is falling down. There's just a lot of work that needs to be done on that house. So, just selling it into private ownership to the next person who promises to take care of it does not guarantee that it will continue to be protected. So, I encourage the city to think carefully and long-term, and if possible, lease the property rather than sell it so that you have continued oversight. If it does end up being sold, please put some mechanisms in there, whether it be a preservation easement, which I've heard somebody say that they've heard, that can't be done with a loan on the property. Well, it can be done. Fire Station Number One recently had a preservation easement. So, please put some things in place to guarantee the long-term protection of this valuable property.
The next speakers, Andrew Zarbo and Sandy Zarbo.
Good evening to the city council and to the mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this, this evening on this issue. And I would like to, as a, as a frequent user of the park and a resident that lives within walking distance of the park, to express my support for the sale of the park to the Van Blaercoms for the purpose of establishing a coffee shop. My name's Andrew Zarbo, and I live at nine-zero-one Carrington Avenue Southwest. The coffee shop will not jeopardize the green space because basically the business would occupy the same footprint that the, that the current, roughly the same footprint that the, that the current, that the cottage currently occupies. And also, it fits in well with the purpose of the park. You know, a coffee shop is, is sort of a low-impact business that it won't, it won't cause a lot of, it won't cause like a negative impact to the park, to the use of the park itself. The, the property, the one-point-one acre property is, is, it's on the edge of the park, near the road, and it's, it's not a very heavily-used area of the park. I mean, I've walked all the trails in the park. I'm very familiar with the layout of the park, and that, that, the way that the, the location of the coffee shop, I think, is a, it, it, it sort of ensures that the impact to the greater part of the park won't be, won't be negative. Also, the Van Blaercoms have, have conducted several informational outreach sessions with the community and have kept the community informed of, of their plans, and they've also received a lot of support from, from the Grandin Court neighborhood and from the surrounding neighborhoods. I went to two of the informational sessions, and I was, I was amazed at the, the amount of support that I saw there, even, even at the meetings hosted by the Grandin Court Community Association. Also, the, the sale of the park is really the only viable option that the city has to save and rehabilitate the historical caretaker's cottage. Also, the Van Blaercoms, they, they've, as part of this purchase, they, they've already, they're contractually obligated to, to meet certain milestones, including, it's very restrictive on what they can do with the property and, and the structure itself. It has to sort of maintain the, the, the same historical nature of the building that, that's been in effect, and it's also, okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having this meeting and letting me speak. My name is Sandy Zarbo, and I am the wife of Andrew. Unlike Andrew, I am not a user of the park. I do not do a lot of walking. I drink a lot of coffee. And when he uses it, especially for walking our dogs, it would be so lovely for me just to take a small walk over, because we're within walking distance, and enjoy a cup of coffee while he goes walks the three dogs. That would be perfect for me. Not having to run to a commercial place like Dunkin' Donuts and giving them my money. I'd rather give it to a private, local owner, supporting local business. The Van Blaercoms are also neighbors of ours. We have known them for approximately, what, about a year and a half? Almost two years since we moved into the neighborhood. They have been very supportive with the community. They own businesses here within the community, a new one they just started, and they've had rental properties for business and other, around the county, Salem, et cetera. They're also very involved with everything. They've had community meetings. They are very active in their church. They're very active with their children's and their activities. Personally, they have been supportive for us when we were foster parents, and now that we're foreign exchange coast family. They always encourage everybody to get involved with the community, and I think this coffee shop, Fishburne Park, would be a great addition to the park. It will enhance it for users and non-users like me, who just want to sit there and enjoy a cup of coffee and watch people being around. Some opponents have distributed incorrect information. They have limited what can be posted on their own Facebook pages. Anything that was in opposition to it did not get posted. I personally know this because I was one of them. Privately, through a private message, when I questioned some of the things I wanted to post, they said, "Well, that's not accurate. It's lies." But it was written by the Van Kier, I'm sorry, Blaercoms. They know what they do. They are very passionate about this. Their kids are passionate about it, and mostly, they have the support of so many people, more than the thousand so-called opponents to it. So, I hope that you do let them have the property and let them buy the property and open their coffee shop. Thank you very much.
The next two speakers, Carol Connolly and Sharon Burnham.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Burnham. I want to first thank you for your service here. I know these issues are difficult. They can be contentious, but I know each of you have the interests of Roanoke in mind when you make your decisions, and so I thank you for taking the time to listen to us. After a great deal of thought, I stand here before you to ask you to vote no on this proposal at this time with the rezoning. Now, I have submitted a written response that details how important the park has been to me and my family. We live about a mile and a half from it. We have been there for about twenty-five years. You know, used it with our family, our dogs. We chose it for the memorial trees for our son and his two children, so it's an important place to me. I was there just this morning to check on the trees, to do my regular walk around the park. It was quiet. It was peaceful. This was about quarter of eight. I can only imagine what it will be like when there's a coffee shop and people lining up to get their morning cup of coffee. I'm an avid coffee drinker myself, actually, but it will change the nature of the park. That cannot be denied. You cannot have a commercial venture situated right next to a park without changing the essential character. There will be people there for coffee who will use the parking for the park, and as a prior speaker said, that has already become a problem. So, the park is important to me and my family, but it's important to everyone here. I've no doubt that. That's not the reason to vote one way or the other. The reason I'm asking you to vote no is that there are two, if not more, important unknowns here. One is the environmental impact this will have. There have been submissions before you detailing concerns about the environmental impact. The other is the viability of the business plan. There's been coffee shops one-point-one miles away that went through three owners before it was finally successful. I do not know the Van Blaercoms have the experience in running this type of business to mean that you have the assurance it will happen. They will be resulting in tremendous change to the park, and it may fail. It may then have to go to someone else, and who knows what they will bring to it. This kind of uncertainty is not in the interest of the people of Roanoke, and I would ask, if you have not adequately explored these two unknowns, that you step back from this decision in order to adequately look at those two questions before making this tremendous change to our public parks.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. On April twenty-seventh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board sent a letter to city council to reaffirm their opposition to the sale of the house and the adjoining acre of parkland. Knowing that city council has already approved the sale pending rezoning, approved the sale pending rezoning, the board requested a full business and development plan from the developers to be shared with the board. With a large percentage of businesses failing within the first year of operation, the board is highly concerned at this site, should the developer end up selling, whoops, yeah, sorry. With a large percentage of businesses failing within the first year of operation, the board is highly concerned about this site, should the developer end up selling the property. The board would like to review the documentation from the bank that states the additional parkland is required as collateral in order to receive their loan. The board also requested that the environmental concerns about the potential for increased stormwater runoff into the Murray Run tributary, as well as the overflow parking within Fishburne Park, be thoroughly reviewed and assessed before considering the rezoning request. Terry McGuire, a member of the board, sent a personal letter the rezoning request. Terry McGuire, a member of the board, sent a personal letter with these additional comments. Despite assurances this land will remain open, council's rezoning of this public green space unquestionably makes the site vulnerable to future commercial development. Its approximate value and commercial lot is hundreds of thousands of dollars and it is being given away for $10. A serious proposal to keep the land as a green space would include placing a conservation easement on the lot. Council's vote to rezone the property moves it in the direction of development and a loss forever as a public green space. Roanoke City doesn't even have a right of first refusal to repurchase the property if the cafe fails. The 2019 Parks and Rec Master Plan states that Roanoke must add 62 acres of additional parkland by 2034. Rezoning an acre of public land in Fishburne Park to commercial moves us in the wrong direction, furthers a terrible precedent of giving away or selling cheaply our priceless public green space and parks and defies council's stated commitment around the sustainability and addressing green space entry canopy equity. Please reject the rezoning proposal and instruct City Manager to work with interested parties to create a plan that does not involve the public's loss of an acreage of green space in Fishburne Park. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Lee, it's nice to see you this evening. I am here in support. First, I guess I should tell you where I live. I do live at 2621 Sweet Briar Avenue. That's a street that runs right down to the park. I am in support of, uh, the proposal that the Van Blaercoms are talking about, as many of my neighbors are. We all use this pork, park quite a bit and we all would like to see this enhancement that would go to the park. We see it as a plus for our neighborhood. We see it as a vision that Roanoke City should see. I'm excited to see that young people are ready to invest into Roanoke City. Sometimes the change that you can have take place is a good thing for our city. This is my neighborhood that we're talking about. This is my community. And Roanoke is a city I love. And I believe the vision that the Van Blaercoms are putting proposal before you will be a great asset to this city. And I implore you to please vote for what they are proposing. Thank you very much.
Chris Turnball and Turnbull and Forrest Cathcart.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening, City Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm in support of the rezoning of the, uh, parkland and the cabin. And I have to admit, you have a difficult job this evening for two reasons. One, you're not ever going to be, be able to make everybody happy. That's number one. And two, because your decisions often have far-reaching ramifications far beyond what, what's right in front of you. I'm not actually going to rehash what you've heard, the arguments for or against the rezoning of the cottage in Fishburne Park. Uh, and frankly, it would take me about an hour to correct all of the inaccuracies and misinformation that's been pushed out on social media and elsewhere over the past few months. Um, there has been, as others have mentioned, some active censoring of information in public forums. That has been frustrating and a little embarrassing for the Neighborhood Association and I hope that we can resolve that here at some point soon. Instead, I'd like to frame the decision to rezone as one of the best opportunities we have in front of us in the city. We need more entrepreneurs. We need to give them more opportunities to thrive in our city and to build tax revenues so that we can work on some of the important projects that I've had the privilege of being involved with. Um, you have a historic property that will fall down or be torn down because of safety issues if it's not preserved. You have a drain on city resources right now to maintain that property and we've heard that. And I honestly, as a taxpayer in the city, could not tell you that it's a good idea to spend money on that property when we have so many other key things that need to be done. You have a young couple who's willing to invest, willing and interested and enthusiastic about investing in the community. And I'll just, I'll add, there's 1,300 or so other people who are also interested in seeing that coffee shop go forward. And then you have this coffee shop that could be a strong, uh, tax revenue for the city and a tax generator. It's, it's a win-win situation. And I think, I've had the privilege in my professional life of assisting some, on some very important projects for the city. Gun violence prevention, the Roanoke Innovation Corridor. We need more investing in those types of projects. That's what Justin and Carrie and countless other entrepreneurs can do to help our city. We should be celebrating this public-private partnership. Supporting entrepreneurship enables us to continue to invest in these important programs and many more. And we should continue finding ways to build these partnerships in every quarter of the city, not just in Southwest. Thank you all.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Forrest Cathcart. I've grown up in, um, Roanoke for most of my life. Um, neighbors have been canvassing the Grandin Court neighborhood to let them know about the city's application to vacate the public's right to access one of the few usable green spaces in Fishburne Park. Most of the people in, in the neighborhood didn't know this was a possibility. There is strong opposition from the rezon, to the rezoning of over an acre of land to commercial use. They want to keep the public's right to access the open green space. People have also expressed the $10 price for over an acre of land and a house is unacceptable. Many express concern about a retail business in Fishburne Park since it's in the middle of a residential part of the neighborhood. Retail businesses are a half mile down the road and clustered in alignment with the neighborhood plan. Sweet Donkey Co- Cafe sits on only a third of an acre. This rezoning application is not in alignment with the neighborhood plan. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the recent 2040 Comprehensive City Plan, the city's request to vacate the public's right to access the parkland includes exempting it from the city's comprehensive plan. The Van Blaercoms want to leverage the equity in over an acre of our public land, but there are other financing opportunities that could be used for their project without using our public parkland for equity. There are legitimate concerns about losing the buffer of open green space in Fishburne Park that protects our neighborhood from the activities in the park. That buffer protects home values and the peace in our neighborhood. Another attraction in Fishburne Park means more parking and public safety issues. Since the new dis golf course and playground have been installed, the parking lot has been full almost every day. The neighborhood is already concerned about parking and public safety issues as the weather warms up. As someone who also lives by Sweet Donkey Cafe currently, parking gets really bad over there as well. So combining these two is difficult to see as feasible. Restrictions aren't permanent and can be changed just like the zoning can be changed in Fishburne Park. A conservation easement would protect the land from future development, but it wouldn't guarantee the public's right to access it. The Van Blaercoms can't promise that the public will still be able to use the open green space. They don't know what insurance company might require to cover their liability or how that might change in the future. They don't know if their business venture will be successful or how their lives might change. The neighborhood doesn't want to lose our access to the park and the buffer it provides to the surrounding residential area. We don't want enthusiastic couples' dream to become our nightmare. Thank you.
E. Dwayne Howard and Kat Pettigo.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable members of City Council. I've said all I can say to City Council in the emails over the past week or so about this sale. The gravity of what council will vote on tonight reaches far and wide. A young man of 19 who drove my campaign car in 2000 when I ran for mayor now lives in California. He now serves on his City Council. He got wind of this sale of our parkland from seeing my postings on Facebook. I believe he took the time to write counsel to oppose this sale as a former Roanoker. I believe this City Council has a moral responsibility to uphold its Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in its decision to oppose this sale at this time. City Council, you all appoint the members of, that serve on the Parks and Recs Board. And they have been, and I have been a member of that board also. And they unanimously voted to oppose the sale. They are the experts that City Council and government put on this board to make proper decisions in the best interest of our parkland. And their opinion should carry more weight than the planning commissions. This Citizens Advisory Board has, let me see, the Citizens Advisory Board has seen the flaws of this proposal and they have opposed the sale at this time. I believe our City Council that sits before us this evening has a moral responsibility to uphold the decision of their Parks and Recs Advisory Board, who they chose to serve our city. The many fine citizens who have spoke in favor of this sale, their arguments are only an ounce of weight compared to the hundreds of pounds of factual weight that opposes this sale. We, the shareholders of our parkland, beseech City Council to delay this sale of our parkland at this moment in time. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much for letting us all speak. I know you guys are hearing a lot from, a lot of folks tonight. Uh, my name is Kate Pettigo. I live in Grandin Court neighborhood. I've been there for just under, um, 10, just under five years. Um, when I heard that there was a possible coffee shop coming to our neighborhood park, uh, my husband and I got our dog and our son and we loaded him up into his little red wagon and we timed out how long it was going to take to get from our house to this proposed site for the new coffee shop. It's about 12 minutes. Um, on our way, we passed other neighbors. We said hello. We walked through green spaces, through Murray Run, under the trees. Um, and we talked about how much fun we would have building traditions, going to the coffee shop as our son grows up. Uh, we got excited about the fact that we would be getting to know our neighbors better by seeing them in this communal space in a relaxing atmosphere, enjoying beverages, enjoying muffins, whatever it is that they may bring out. Um, so we are, we were excited about that. Um, speaking to others who are working mothers, people who couldn't be here tonight, people who are friends of mine, neighbors, um, folks that I just know from the community, so many of us feel the same way, that this is something that we could look forward to. To those of us that are in favor of this, um, we believe that when a community is faced with a structure and a space like this that benefits from the Van Blaercoms' vision, their work and their business expertise, that it's a resounding no-brainer. We would gladly take a chance on 1.1 acres when we have 40 acres adjacent to it. We know that they have to take consideration for the environment and for, um, the public use of the space while they're building the structure. So we have faith in that. Um, as someone who lives in Roanoke and enjoys 1.6 times the national average park space per resident, uh, based on the 2020 NRPA study, um, that's 10,000 acres or more than 10,000 acres, we could take a chance on this 1.1 acre, especially when the vision is to maintain that green space and just address the cabin. Um, there have been so many pieces of this process to consider and address. And rather than throwing in the towel because of the difficulty of starting this project, the Van Blaercoms have persisted. That sort of positive motion builds communities. And that's one of the things that I love most about Roanoke. When you have someone like that with vision and staying power, you bet on them. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Candace Verway.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you for working for the city of Roanoke. You can probably tell from my accent, I'm not from here. But I have lived here for 22 years. Um, I have, I live in Grandin Court. I've lived there for about 16 years and I own two homes. I'm about a half mile from the park. I go by it all the time. As I sat back and looked at what was going on, I, I thought about what was happening and what Owen spoke about, about what was going on in the neighborhood. Yeah, the neighborhood is split. I'm not a political activist. I'm not even into politics. I hate it. Okay? But I'm here because I believe in the vision that the Ver, Van Blaercoms have. When I look at what's going on, I characterize it as the David, David and Goliath. Typically, Goliath would be the city, right? It's not in this case. And I'm ashamed to say, it's my own neighborhood association, who has not asked the 2,500 residents of Grandin Court. They have not polled them. They have not done a survey, only around the area where the park is. Yes, as other people have said, there's a Facebook page. There's not one. There's two. Both are controlled by the leadership of my organization. I personally have posted things that either didn't get posted because they control what can be said, or it's been removed. I have been censored because of my views on, on the park. There is not an opportunity in my neighborhood for people to hear what people like me have to say. And therefore I feel that it's very slanted one way because people didn't get to hear both sides. I got to hear both sides. How? I went to all three meetings. I got educated. Did I want to? No. I got better things to do. But I thought it was really, really important that I understand both sides of the issue. And as you can tell, I support them. Do I know them? No. I'm one of the Davids, okay? I didn't know them before. I didn't even know their name. I know them now because I went to their meetings and I heard what they had to say. And I believe in them. So I hope that you take all of us little Davids into consideration when you make your vote and support the sale of this land and cottage to them for everybody's benefit. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Frida Cathcart.
Does this pointer work?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. That's handy. Thank you. Um, so I appreciate this opportunity. Um, I do want to, um, say that, um, there was volunteers in the neighborhood that did go door-to-door with paper petitions. 117 within two blocks of the park signed the petition, uh, objecting to the sale and, um, rezoning of the land. And, um, close to 200 signed it. Um, that's a lot of effort. Those of you that have done petitions with paper, face-to-face concert, conversations. I, I'm here tonight in my role as the, um, District Director on the Soil and Water Conservation Board, um, to speak for, um, my constituents that can't talk, the water and the wildlife. Nan Gray, a licensed professional soil scientist and Master Alternative On-Site Soil E evaluator, license, wrote to the Planning Commission that the proposed parking area in the plans is too close to the property line and too close to stop overflow of erosive stormwater from cascading down the very steep bank to spring not recognized on the development plans. The parking area- The parking area should not be considered suitable because of the damage it can do to the spring. Infiltrative or impervious pavers would help, but does not solve the chipping away bit by bit of a park. There are springs of fresh mountain water that emerge in the park and need to be protected from contamination, and she pleads to not reduce the Fishburne Park in size or effectiveness in protecting the springs of water in the park. Eric Seton, the Floyd Fest environmental consultant, wrote in his letter to the city that the health of the ecosystems that surround Fishburne Park should be at the forefront of every step of this project. Hydrologists and geologists from the DEQ should be involved to ensure the impact on the environment and the surrounding ecosystems remains minimal. I met with Ian Shaw, oops, oh dear. I'm sorry. I pressed the wrong button. There it is. I met with Ian Shaw to look at these plans. There's the parking lot, and there's a lot of decking. That's a lot of impervious surface. The spring is down here. It's less than 130 feet, and state code has requirements within 200 feet. I was talking to Ian Shaw that they needed to get a hydrologist in there to look at that evaluation and to see what was happening. That has not been done. And this is the habitat of the endangered Roanoke log perch, so it's very important. And if you know what happened to Floyd Fest this past year, it's really important to do that due diligence of getting these environmental evaluations before this rezoning application is approved to see what is real, what is, what is at risk, especially this plan, because, oh darn it, that would be a more appropriate place for parking because there's a long riparian buffer over there. But this needs to be sent back to the drawing board for the planning commission and staff to meet with experts like the DEQ hydrologists. So please deny this current application for rezoning until the concerns addressed by the experts are addressed and the plan is altered to protect our water and the wildlife that's there. And it's important to consider the wildlife when you're looking at parks, too. Thank you for this time.
Those, those opposed, can you please stand up?
That concludes all of our speakers, ma'am.
For that matter, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All the citizens wishing to be heard have been heard on this matter, therefore I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues their comments, and I'll, if you have any comments, I'll start with Mr. Foster.
So thank you, everybody, for your, your voices tonight on what you believe is right or wrong in this situation. There's a lot of different pieces to this, and so I'd like to get a few questions answered before we make this decision. One of the questions that's come up multiple times is, what happens if this doesn't work and it gets sold within the next couple of years? Is there somebody at the planning department that could possibly tell us, is this, once this is rezoned to commercial, does that give up every right for this to be parkland? Or how, what does that look like? If, let's say, five, 10 years, 20 years down the road, what happens if this land is sold?
Thank you for the opportunity. With a rezoning to a MXPUD, the site plan that you have on the overhead slide is, is locked in, so the uses described on that plan that are enabled are, are limited in nature, so any deviation, whether it be the uses in that plan or the relationship of, of buildings to parking areas, landscaping, sidewalk improvements that are shown, any deviation would have to come back through the very same process to be approved by planning commission and city council. Does that answer your question?
It does. So in the future, if, let's say, you know, five years down the road, it's sold, and they don't want to do a coffee shop, they want to do a sandwich shop, they'd have to come and see us about that.
So an eating establishment is also listed?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Bad example.
Another, throw another use at me.
They wanted to build apartments on that.
Correct. They would have to come back.
Is there any requirement about the, like, how much parking there is supposed to be at this location?
That is specified on the plan as well, so what is, what is described there on the plan, and it's a little small for my, my view from here. Let's see how thick my glasses are. Six spaces are proposed with an ADA space.
And what about, is there, is there anything in the code that allows for permeable parking surfaces?
There is. So there are considerations that would, when it comes to impervious service, surface and how we calculate that from a zoning perspective, we consider that a discount, and that is something that is specified on the, the development plan as well, I believe.
Okay. And are they planned to be permeable or impermeable?
We're looking at, we're looking at permeable options. That is, I mean, obviously, we want to have as little impact on, on the environment as possible. We, we had originally planned less parking spaces, but after the community meeting, the community wanted more parking spaces to offset and pull, not have to have as much use of the park parking, so that's why we've added more. So we'll offset that with rain barrels and any kind of permeable parking that we can.
Is there any way to move the parking from that side that is closer to the spring to over where the, the vacant area where Brambleton is? I just, personally, as my, my thoughts looking at this is that it would be easier for folks to get in and out of your parking if it's right there on Brambleton instead of having to go through other areas, and that that might, with permeable surfaces, make it less of a, an issue when it comes to any worries about the spring that's on the other side of the hill.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the, any kind of setbacks and that sort of thing on the parking. This is the existing parking area for the house, and so we were trying to have as little impact on the rest of the property as possible by reusing the existing area and adding a couple spots to that.
Another question that's come up this evening is the use of, of the land as collateral. Is that, could you speak a little bit about that and what the requirement is, why that's a requirement?
Yeah, I mean, there's, ultimately, when you borrow money to do something, people only loan you up to the value of, or a percentage of the value of the property. And so we took the lesson from the last person that had this under contract that walked away because of the cost of renovation got too high, and so we wanted to make sure that we could do it right by having enough equity there to secure the financing for that. We believe that anybody can make a difference, and just because we don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars, we should still be able to, to, to do this. And so, so we do fully intend on, on leveraging that, and I've said that from the beginning with my first meeting with the association on, and so that is something that, but we're doing it in a way that protects it from future development, and nobody can use it for anything other than what it's being used for today on that property.
What, I mean, we had your neighbor talk about you owning rental properties and other businesses. Why do we need to have this as the equity? Why not put up some kind of other equity that you might own?
Yeah, ultimately, it's, I mean, every business should be able to stand on its own, and I think that's where the, a lot of the, even people saying that this is a not sustainable business, that everything fails in the first, I mean, that's part of the opposition to this, is part of that is making smart decisions from the beginning. And so we're trying to set this up for success from the beginning, and that's, that is where the numbers, the work for this plan, and it's not contingent on another, another business working or not working.
And is there any way, I know a preservation easement came up. Where did Jillian go? There you are. Sorry. Is there any, any possibility for preservation or, or anything that we can put into this that would say in the future this goes back to a park or the city gets the first right of refusal if this goes up for sale or anything like that?
I think one of the best assurances is for the applicant to make use of the incentives available to them for investing in the historic structure, which is the use of state and federal historic tax credits, and it's my understanding that they plan to do so.
And that would create some sort of preservation requirement?
They would be required to maintain both the, through the state and federal tax credit application process, both a level of rehabilitation that adheres to the Secretary of Interior standards, both on the outside and on the inside of the historic structure.
Okay. All right. I think that's all the questions I have, ma'am.
All right. Anybody else, Ms. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on some of the comments that was made, one comment was made was with regards to other uses. There's been some that have spoken about the food trucks and that there may be, I want to say festivals or some sort of other activity to be able to be done on this property.
Yeah, the only thing that we have put on there is food trucks, and they, what we added to that was having electric plugins for those food trucks so that we don't have to hear generators in the park. And so that was some feedback that we took into consideration, and that's, food, food trucks are, I mean, a big draw to, to every area. So if the, if the neighborhood wants food trucks and, and have a place that they can eat while they're on, at lunch and having coffee, then we want to provide that for them. It's not meant to create more controversy, it's just as an add, add to the neighborhood.
And what about after those late hours? Would there be any activities going on after hours that would impede the pleasure of the, the residents who enjoy sitting on their porches at nighttime? Would they be subject to loud noise, loud music? Any of those type of things from the property being rezoned?
No, ma'am, I mean, there's, there's laws for that stuff. Our intention is to not have a, have a club in the, in the park. It's, it's a coffee shop, and so people stop drinking coffee at some point during the day.
Yeah.
And so that's, our intention is to have very similar hours to a sweet donkey type of establishment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that all, Ms. Moon?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
One follow-up, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
One of the, the requests from the Parks Advisory Board was, you know, to get a business plan or anything like that that they could see. Is there a reason why that wasn't provided?
Because the Parks and Rec Advisory Board relays that information to you all, and my contract is with you all. No one has asked me for that from Parks and Rec Advisory Board, but my contract is with the city, and so I have executed on every part of this in good faith with my contract with the city, as you all have with me, and that is not in the contract, so that's why it hasn't been voluntarily provided.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have another question, and I'm sorry. The other one, and I don't think it's for you, sir, it's, it's more for the city with regards to the recommendation that came from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on two separate occasions where they were not supportive of this rezoning. Was that taken into consideration at all?
That's not really something that would be in the purview of consideration for the planning commission. They're basing their decisions based on the, the policies in City Plan 2040 and the area plan, not...
So it's more along the lines for city council to consider, since it's an advisory board, it's, is that?
I'm going to let the city attorney take that one.
That's why I'm looking at him now.
It is an advisory board, but what's before you is the zoning. Of course, that advisory would have been, is to the contract. We're now in the purview of planning, so the planning commission, in essence, is your advisory board for this rezoning.
Right, so at what point would we have considered the advisory, I mean, the PRAB Board's recommendation?
Back last year when we voted to approve the contract.
Okay.
And just, so it's clear that there was, there was opposition from, from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of that contract as well, so.
Right, okay.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Bruton?
Wait and see if everybody else has to say. First question, the, well, obviously, amendment between, I know it was related to parking, but how many parking spaces changed from the initial application to zoning amendment one? Was that the, is that when I heard the, like, the six, one, eight, one said earlier? So it probably went from seven to nine?
I don't remember the exact number.
I believe the current one is nine, and I think earlier I misheard it, a six plus one, but it sounds like seven, which would have most likely been the initial. I was just wondering how much of a change it was.
Yeah, so we, the, the meeting that we, that we got the advice to add more spaces, that the community wanted more spaces, was the day before we submitted the application, so we adjusted that night to the, to this plan that we submitted to the, to the application.
So is it just an increase of two spaces?
Yeah, I think we, we added, you don't remember what the original? I, I don't have the original.
That's what I'm gathering from it, I'm just wondering if anyone has the actual info.
It was...
And we've only submitted one development plan.
Yeah.
This has remained the same.
We changed.
The whole time.
We added nine.
The contract we referenced.
Yeah. We just added it before the official submission, but we can go back to our draft before we submitted it. I think it was, it was probably two or three spots. It's a trade-off because you, you want enough spots that people can have parking and not impede on the park, but you want not too many spots that you have permeable, impermeable surface and, and have water, so we're trying to balance that to make everybody happy at once, which is hard to do, as you guys know.
And it was from our opposition that requested more parking spaces. It wasn't from others. A lot of our, a lot of the expected traffic and users of the coffee shop, we expect to be on bike and foot and strollers, so we do realize that there will be cars, as did they, and so per their request, we went ahead and had our architect draw in these additional spaces.
Thank you. I don't have more questions. I do have a series of comments, but I just don't know when the appropriate time is, and if anybody wants to ask their other questions first.
Well, I'll come back to you because you'll be ready to vote if anybody asks you any questions.
Well, I just had one. Let me see if it comes back to my head.
Really lose it?
It was about parking, because you brought it up. Never mind. It's not going to come back in time.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Really just a comment and, and, and observation. First of all, I'm always grateful for the number of people that show up to speak about these issues because it shows that we have citizens who care about our city and are very passionate about our city, and I love that about Roanoke. We, regarding parking, I think it's marvelous that we are seeing an increased usage of our parks. I think we need to celebrate that and not fight about it, so I just wanted to say that. With that being said, parking is a concern, and this came up with River's Edge, where we also have access and outlets for food trucks, because that's a reality. We have increased events taking place in our parks. I don't know, I haven't seen lately the, the shelter schedule, but I, it seems like every time I go to any number of parks, our shelters are scheduled, and, and there are activities taking place there. I was in Wasina Park, and both shelters were active the whole afternoon, so that's another indicator of increased usage. I know that the city has already started a parking study assessment, not only of River's Edge, but I'm, I'm hoping that that will expand to our other parks so that we can really see. I know Eureka Park was mentioned as, as, as one place, so I think that's really important that we're reviewing that and, and taking that step. I, I want to commend everyone for your attention to, to the details of all of this. I think that's, that's a great testament to how important this is to all of us. To the Van Blarecombs, I want to say that you have gone, in my opinion, above and beyond in terms of being amenable to listening and making changes, and it's clear to me that you care very much about the stewardship of this land. This is, this is not about just creating a coffee shop and restoring a building, it's about also caring for the land that's around. I, I know that you've, you've, you've heard about a community garden, about keeping this land open and available for people to use it, so I want to commend you for that. I also want to commend people who've raised questions about the environmental impact, and I'm, again, impermeable. And I'm, again, impermeable, impervious surfaces, you've heard that. I think we, we can't know some things until we explore some things, and so that involves some risk-taking. And we won't fully know for a while what that, what the erosion effects might be, what the environmental effects will be. But even though this is a proposed rezoning and sale, I'm also hearing in it people who very much care for this land and want to keep it, in essence, what it is, but just add another asset to it. And that's very, that's, that's very exciting to me, too. So I just wanted to make those, those comments and just remind folks that we are dedicated to this parking study assessment, not just for this park, but for other parks, and I'm thrilled that we're seeing an increased usage in our parks overall. That's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I concur with the, you got another question?
Yeah, payback to me.
Okay.
It was about parking, and do you guys have any sense of what the expected number of folks coming in and out every day or week or anything like that?
Yeah, so one of the things that the Planning Commission asked us to go back and do was a trip generation summary, which is on the plan. Based on AM peak hour generation, it says, there's a calculation based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual, 11th Edition, based on a coffee shop without drive-through window, and it's 39 AM trips generated and 13 PM trips generated. And that is, that is on the plan. That's something that the Planning Commission came back to us and asked us to run, so we had our engineer do that study as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
I'm ready to give my speech or whatever it's called.
You go ahead and give your speech, Jim.
Vivian told me to be short, I'll try to be short as I collect thoughts in my head. Thank you, everyone, for speaking on each side of this issue. This topic predates even the current zoning application, that's before us. I can remember sitting in the audience the last time that zoning and/or proposed sale was up of this particular property, and I'm fairly certain that Mayor Lee and Councilwoman Stephanie Moon Reynolds were the only two people up here, anyone, who would have been on or near the dais at the time that that was considered, and how the process has gone from then until now. Since then, I've served in a citizen capacity on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with later letters against selling and rezoning this property predating my time in that position, and some coming during my time in that position. But in the final letter that we sent, one thing that we tried to address on is I could tell there's incredible support for something to be done on this property, for a coffee shop to be considered, and that is where it was most divisive. As I added up the fours and against, and that's not how I do my vote, but as you add those up, even the people that you have against, you have a few people in there who have a sentiment in there. They want to see something done, they want to see a coffee shop, they want to see a positive use for this property. And that's where you get to, you know, the status quo. And truly, the status quo of what is occurring on this property is unacceptable, is brought up by the individual focusing on the preservation of it, and seeing this property be vacant will just lead it to further fall apart. That is largely what led to, when I was in my capacity as Chair of the Parks and Rec Board, to shift my focus from being completely against the sale to being supportive of it if it could be with some kind of reduced acreage, some .6 acres, so that way we could preserve as much of the parkland as possible. I know that that vote on the contract was taken before I took my seat on this dais, and that was not considered even in the most recent contract extension that was granted to the Von Blarecombs. But that reduced acreage, even if all of the property was still being given to the Von Blarecombs, the 1.1 acres, but there had been two separate zonings, maybe keep recreation open space in the part where a community garden is being sought, because it's allowed under recreation open space already without changing the zoning, and then just using mixed use for the portion that needs to be changed into a building or into a parking lot. Because as I said earlier, sitting in that audience, only seeing only one member of the council currently who's on it, being there before, I'm less concerned about the decision that's being made today and the proposal that's in the plans there, I'm concerned with the future and the people who will be sitting up on this dais that come past my time. And the, you know, once you have a rezoning come in, the amendments, they come pretty easy, we see those and they get approved almost with flying colors. That is the true concern I have with rezoning this entire piece of property. And if the rezoning had been minutely focused on the piece that truly needs to be developed and the rest of it having kept recreation open space, I would feel more comfortable being in support of it. But, but given that, it's changing all of it, and I can't guarantee who will be here in two, four, six, eight years from now. Sadly, I'm not able to support it today, but I do want to express support to the Von Blarecombs and their vision for trying to do something positive with this property and understand where my values are coming on, from the preservation of green open space. And I do hope that you all are successful. I hope that the success, though, is measured so that we don't outgrow the space and that it needs more parking, because I want that to be limited as much as possible so that it, it truly stays a park in all the ways that it can. But I just wanted to share all that, and my speech wasn't too long, Vivian.
Thank you.
All right. Fossey, you want to say a comment?
Just a comment real quickly. Just barely under there. One of the things that I think this, this issue brings up is what, what is our public spaces, what are we going to be using those for in the future? And should there be a way for vendors to be able to use the recreational zoning so that the Parks and Rec can have coffee shops and other things, and providers and vendors that are able to be in these without giving out, giving away property as part of that?
Sure. That, there's a more narrow way to consider those limited type uses as temporary uses in the zoning ordinance. It's something that we already enable for food trucks in most of our zoning districts. And then, of course, in conjunction with public events, we certainly allow those as temporary uses, if that helps to address your question.
Well, I look at other parks in, around the world, and you have places that have parks that have coffee shops in them, that, you know...
Piedmont Park in Atlanta.
Exactly. If you go to Paris, I know it's a little bit different, but they have coffee shops. So maybe just how we come up with that in the future as something that we can, instead of it just being for temporary ones, somewhere we can have it more permanently.
Yeah.
Does that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. But that being said, we'll, I'm going to ask the clerk to call a row.
Mr. White Boyd?
No.
Mr. Volleson?
No.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
No.
Mr. Pretty?
No.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Uh, no. So the ordinance fails. Thank you. All right. We'll go to item number four.
Is the next item out of order?
Yes.
Is it out of order?
It relates to the previous amendment, so it fails.
So there's no need to discuss 15-2.
All right, that...
Get it to number three.
All right, so we'll go to item five.
Go to number three.
Three?
Item two was out of order, we're on item four.
Wait a minute, man. What's that?
Fifteen-three.
I thought I said five.
It is five, in our agenda.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the actual... Sorry, ma'am.
We all need to be... We're on item five, okay? Item five. All right. Item five. Let me wait. Item number five is a proposal of the City of Roanoke to grant Cox Communications Inc. a five-year service easement. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, clerk, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a 15-foot-wide, above-ground and underground easement across city-owned property located at 502 19th Street, Southeast Roanoke, Virginia, 24013, designated as Tax Map Number 4310101 to Cox Communications, Inc., upon certain terms and conditions, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, I, at this time, recognize the City Manager for any comments that he may have.
No, no additional comments from what is in the information, so thank you.
All right. But we're going to open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, no citizens wishing to be heard, then I'm going to close the public hearing and ask council if they have any comments. Hear none? Madam Clerk, please call a row.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is hearing of citizens upon public matters. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody to sign?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Ken McLeod.
That person must not be here. All right.
All right. The next person is Emily Kate Copenhagen.
I would say good evening, but I think we're safely into night territory, so goodnight, council. I brought a prop, but I know a few of you may know me through my professional capacity, but I was doing some research into how to early vote in Roanoke City, and I found that the information might not be super easily accessible, and also, when you do find it, it's not super easy to read. So I brought this, I'll show it to anyone if you want to see it, but it's online. So this is what you get when you, like, try to figure out how to early vote, which is not very appealing. So I just kind of wanted to say on the record and break this down a little bit. So voting started on May 1st, that's when we started early voting, and then May 30th is the last day to register. So you can still register for the primary on June 20th, on May 30th is the last day, and that has to be by 11:59 online. And then June 9th is the last day to apply for an absentee ballot. This is pretty recent in Virginia, but you can have an absentee ballot, no questions asked. So if anyone would like to mail in their vote, the last day to acquire an absentee ballot or to apply for one online, or at the registrar's office is June 9th. June 10th and June 17th are early voting Saturdays, so the registrar's office will be open from 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturday to vote on June 10th and June 17th. And then June 20th, Election Day, is where you have to look up your polling place. So the registrar's office is no longer where you go to vote. On the 20th, you vote at your polling place. Hopefully, you haven't put it off for that long, but if you do, no worries, you can look up your polling place at elections.virginia.org, and then you can return mail-in ballots at the same time on Election Day. So just make sure those are either postmarked by the 20th, or you are voting by 7:00 PM on Election Day. If anyone says the word provisional ballot to you, know that you have to get that situation figured out by June 23rd. So someone's going to be emailing you, calling you, knocking on your door, probably some, probably all of them. But by June 23rd, those provisional ballots are due. So if you hear provisional ballot, doesn't mean that your vote's not going to be cast at all, just means, like, might need to take a little extra step. So if you are 18 years old by November 7th, you can vote in this election, you just need to be a US citizen. And then if you have been convicted of a felony and you've had those voting rights restored, make sure that you are registered to vote. So that's also kind of a little new. So we have, also wanted to remind folks of absentee voting, and then the registrar's office for early voting is 317 Kimball Avenue, Northeast. It's across from the Burlington Center and between Domino's and Member One. Sorry, I was watching the clock. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, Chris Kratt.
I'm glad I spoke to the nice gentleman, the City Manager back here, he straightened out one thing and I was going to chew out. But anyway, I think right now that Estelle McCadden, a great friend of mine, is looking down on the decision y'all made and saying that you made a great decision. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on a couple of things. Five weeks from Thursday is the best part of summer, it's to lead outdoor basketball, and we hope you'll all come out and visit. And guess what is three weeks away, two weeks away? The Ironman. And speaking of Ironman, I want to say thank you to our City Manager. After the Ironman last year, I sort of chewed his head off because the way the roads looked through Fallon Park, and I went through there today, and they've paved them.
They're beautiful.
Which is going to look good for the bicyclists, not only for the bicyclists, but for people coming to run it. It'll give them a good impression on how great of a city we have. I want to invite City Council members, too. A couple of them have told me in the past they wanted to do it, but I have never seen anybody show up. But I'd like to invite them to come on a tour of the Wildwood neighborhood, which will be 90 years old next year. We have a lot of problems. Tinkin' Creek is full of dead trees, which the city says they cannot clean up, but I know they can. All those dead trees in that creek are going to back up the water one day, and we're going to have another flood of 85. We need to get them trees cleaned out of that creek. Show us some love in northeast Roanoke. I'd like to ask for the city's help in filling the vacated Walmart neighborhood market, which has been closed for over five years. That's a great tax revenue spot in our city that's just sitting vacant. We need to do something with it. And also, the last thing, the City Manager can probably look into, I've called the city's Commissioner of Revenue multiple times over the past six months, trying to change vehicles. They put me into a voicemail, never get a phone call back. But I get the bill in the mail, which is wrong, so I don't pay it. Speaking of bills, they must, y'all must have changed the date, because me and most of my neighborhood have not gotten our bills yet. With that new system, we haven't gotten our bills.
For what, personal property?
Yes, sir.
Personal property tax.
I haven't gotten mine, and multiple people in Wildwood Civic League have not gotten theirs. But anyway, and also, I'd like to ask the City Manager to have Mr. Luke Pugh contact me. Last summer, a truck literally broke the railing off at 13th Street and Orange Avenue, went over into the creek. That railing has not been fixed, they stuck wood across it. The bridge is cracking, where the city just paid millions of dollars to have them resurface a few years ago. I called the engineering office and I'm told, well, we'll get to it when we can. And I said, well, I'm the Neighborhood Association President, we need, we'd like to know in our neighborhood when it's going to be fixed. We have kids leaning over that wood, it'll fall if that wood breaks. Well, I'll give the message to Luke Pugh and he'll call you back. No luck. I don't even think he got the message. But I'm scared if those kids this summer are going to be leaning over that wood railing and they're going to fall. And guess whose responsibility that's going to lie on? The city and my tax dollars.
Chris, let me ask you something. Where is that, what street is that on?
13th and Orange, right there where Vic Thomas used to have his store.
Down where Old Caesar, Little Caesar's moved from to the next door.
The westbound side.
Right, correct.
Okay, we'll pass that. Okay, we'll pass that on to, to our manager. All right?
Our next speaker is Ellis Strater.
I'm sorry you all have to wait so long when we have these public hearings and get to speak. My name is Ellis Strater. I thank you for your time. I thank you for that lovely prayer. It's unbelievable. I'm a firm believer that if God is increasing his country, the problems would decrease. I'm here today because I take the public transportation system, and I've helped people in wheelchairs on the bus, and it is a pain to get a wheelchair on that bus. The people to get on there that I, that I try to help, they can't get in their pocket to get their money out, to reach over and put it, I mean, it... I'm basically here asking you to consider letting people that are in wheelchairs to ride the bus for free, you know? And I've had someone say, "Yeah, but if you do that, then you'll have everybody coming on the bus in a wheelchair." Believe me, that is not going to happen. You know, that is not going to happen. They're not going to drag a wheelchair around all day long when they can ride free on the bus. Come on. But that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here on their behalf. It's just, it's really a pain. It really, it really is. They got to turn that corner, and it's, it's just, I, I just hope that you would consider something along that line, just to, just to help these people out. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Joe Ko.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor of City Council. I'm here once again about my speeding thing on my expressway here. I live on Northwest on a Palmer and Forest Park. Like, I talked with you the last time I was here and instructed the manager to give me a call, and never called. But over the weekend, we had two incidents there. I have a 92-year-old neighbor that just likes to walk up and down the street there. Well, sadly, she was pushed off the street because somebody decided they don't want to slow down. Now, I have a 10-year-old daughter. I moved here for my daughter to have something to do. Didn't move here for her to get ran over by somebody, just, just don't want to slow up. The police know that they speeding in there, and also, the traffic division know, because I didn't went to them. I even went to try to talk to the police chief. I got to have an appointment to see him. What can I do to get me a, if they ain't going to put a police there to write a bunch of tickets, can I get a guard rail there? Because I got stopped Friday for a license plate bug, a $3 bug at 9:00 at night, which it was just a warning. Now, if they can stop you for a license plate bug, why they can't stop them people from speeding down that street? They write a book of tickets in 30 minutes. All they have to do is just sit there. They going to come.
What street is it, do you own?
I'm on Forest Park and Palmer Avenue, right there on that corner. And it's a real, that's, that's a expressway. It's simply there, because if they come off of, come off the other, off of Cove coming across, if they want to go to the right, they'll go way over there to the left side just to go right. And when they go on the left side to go right, the cars coming off of Forest Park going to hit it, and then they... I don't even think they know what stopped me around here, because they just come right on through a stop sign. So, at that point, I don't even know, but I know that that is a dangerous spot, and I did not move my daughter here to get ran over by a car, and policemen, they know where to be found.
What was it, Forest Park, and where?
Palmer Avenue.
Palmer.
Right there on the corner. Can't miss it. You can just sit right there. They going to come and get you. Anytime they run over the policeman, that's got to be bad. I let the policeman see the video of the wreck that they had over that other day. "Oh, well, we know they speed down here." Okay, well, what good it is for y'all to know, y'all ain't doing nothing, but you will stop for a $3 bug? It don't make no sense. I would just like to see something happening at some point, but if not, I'll be back.
Well, let's hope, nah, let's hope something will be there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
That's all the speakers.
Thank you. All right. We refer to these last comments to the city manager, have somebody looking at it with the police department. There's nothing else to come before this council, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.